Planning Board meeting, North Smithfield Planning Board meeting for March 13th, 2025 is called to order at 7:01. First on the agenda is our roll call. Dr. Benoit?
Here.
Mr. Porter?
Here.
Mr. Bernard?
Here.
Mr. Ozier?
Here.
The Chair is here. Ms. Ramos is not sure if she will be here. Dr. Roberts will not be here. Next I'm up. Review the minutes for the February 13th minute meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
There are no minutes from February 13th. Staff has been out of the office and we're unable to get the minutes for this meeting. We'll have them at the next meeting.
Another reason why you need an intern, but okay.
(laughing)
Okay, then we'll move on to item four, disclosure. Does anybody on the planning board, any member, need to disclose any potential conflicts on matters before the Board this evening? Nope?
No.
Okay.
Next one, yes.
Next meeting? Next meeting?
No, no disclosure.
Oh, next one, okay. Disclosure notes, any planning board members need to disclose any ex parte communications about any contested or material adjudicatory facts or opinions concerning the merits of any application before the planning board.
I will direct to our solicitor.
Can you turn your mic up?
We have received emails from a resident opposing the quarry situation. We have received an email from our Vice Chair telling us what our motion should be, and yet we have not concluded our hearings. I find these things very unorthodox, very improper, and I'd like your advice on how we should move forward.
Well, as far as any, any information you receive from any abutters or residents that should have been circulated to the applicant, anything that comes to you must go to the applicant, and anything that comes to the applicant must go, when anything comes to you from, in a bottom must go to the applicant, and it comes to you from the applicant must go and be available to the public.
And I believe that has occurred in that case, right? Because the planner was on the emails.
Mr. Chairman, I have forwarded that information to the applicant's attorney. Once it was received by members of the Board, I did forward it to the applicant's attorneys.
Did you forward everything that Dr. Benoit?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
So that's, that's the, that's got to do with it, but as far as members of the Board, I guess, as long as you forward it to the applicant, it's okay, but I think as a matter, matter of course, you really shouldn't be submitting anything unless you're at this hearing. The idea is you're not supposed to be communicating with each other except at the hearing.
I sent it through Mark.
Okay. All right, you didn't send it directly?
No.
No.
No, I sent it to Mark for distribution.
And, and Mark, I don't, I'm just...
I also forwarded, I forwarded that document also yesterday, I believe, to the applicant's attorney.
As long as the applicant's attorney got everything, or vice versa, anything that came from the applicant was available to the public, we're good to go. But I appreciate you taking that time to bring that out so everybody's aware of the process.
Thanks for the clarification.
Anything else? Nope, okay. Voting members this evening, Dr. Benoit, Mr. Porter, Ms. Bernard, Mr. Ozier, and myself. And first item, public hearing, Unified Development Review for 20 Providence Pike. Mr. Carrulo, if you could give us a summary?
Mr. Chairman, this is a project that had actually been to the planning board several years ago and received master plan approval. It's for an addition to the existing KB Properties Beck Company, 20 Providence Pike. They're looking to expand their business and add additional offices in a large warehouse on the existing site. The property is located within the Water Supply Protection Overlay District, so they will be, they are asking for one dimensional variance to exceed the maximum height by two feet, I believe, and that is because of the topography of the property and trying to match up the building heights, as well as a special use permit for the location within the Water Supply Protection Overlay. I believe the engineer is here for the project and he is, should be prepared to address those items as they're required under the ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. My name is Attorney Joseph Brennan on behalf of the applicant, KB Properties LLC. Thank you for the opportunity to be before you tonight, and thank you to the, to the town staff. Planner Carrulo explained that pretty well. As a whole, it's a pretty simple project. The applicant has a current warehouse on the property. It's about a seven acre lot, and that warehouse, 73,000 square feet. You can see from the aerial on the, on the screen. What they're looking to do is to construct an additional 45,900 square foot warehouse addition that would have a 4,316 square foot office and additional 20 parking spaces. So you can see those parking spaces on the plan when we bring that up. Those are put over to the south side of the property, kind of behind where the, the current building is now, or behind where the new building would be proposed, depending on where you're looking from the, from the current building. The waiver that we're looking for is one for the, which this Board has the power under Unified Development Review to not only give master plan and preliminary approval, but those variances that we need as well, one being the special use permit as, as notated by the planner, because we're in the Water Supply Protection Overlay District, and the second is for the height variance, where we're allowed 35 feet in the zone and we're looking for 37 feet. It's to be noted that the reason for that is because the current building is 37 feet, so it matches everything in line, and additionally, because of the topography of the land, that it just makes it more suitable and a better build, to build it in that, in that height. So, you know, it's minor in the grand scheme of things, too, two feet when there's 35 feet in the zone. So with that said, that, that does sum up the project. What I would like to do is call up the engineer now, Nick Pampiano, and I would like if the Board could also accept him, swear him in, because we have Unified Development Review, and then if they'd also accept him as an expert, as I believe he has testified before this Board numerous other times.
Is there a way to tell the truth before this Board?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Nick Pampiano, professional engineer, advanced civil design, Situate, Rhode Island.
Thank you, Nick. So with, first, the, what we have is, we have the standards of review that we must meet for the dimensional criteria. The first being at the hardship from which the applicant seeks relief due to the unique characteristics of the subject land or structure, and not to the general characteristics of the surrounding area. Do, do you agree with those principles? That's the reasons why we're seeking the two foot height variance?
Yes, I do. And just to go a little bit further, there's a, a big grade difference from the south side to the north side. If you look at the, the corner of Industrial and Providence Pike, there's probably about a 15 to 18 foot grade difference to the existing driveway over on the northerly side that abuts the old railroad tracks. So the actual difference in building height from, from the south end to that north end where the loading docks are is about 12 feet.
Thank you. And maybe a little bit obvious, but that hardship's not the result of any prior action of the applicant?
That's correct.
And in granting the variance, it will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impair the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance or comprehensive plan?
Yes.
And, and I would just add that with the planning office comments, although we don't have an expert planner here, the planning department, speaking on behalf of, of planning, does also state that it's within the comprehensive plan as the property's own manufacturing and the proposed use is an authorized use in that manufacturing zone. And then finally, in granting the dimensional variance, the hardship suffered would mount to more than a mere inconvenience, meaning that relief sought is minimal to a reasonable enjoyment of the permitted use?
I agree.
All right, thank you. And then the other items that we have are related to the special use permit, because the development is in the Water Protection Overlay District. So I know there's 13 of those, so I apologize, but I do think that it's prudent to go through them one by one. First being that, Nick, that the ability to meet the standards contained in the 20, 250-RI CR-150-05-3, Groundwater Quality Rules, Section 3.11, Groundwater Quality Standards of Preventative Action Limits pertaining to GAA and GA classified groundwater areas. Have we satisfied those standards?
Yes, we are treating the, the groundwater and the discharge before it discharges back into the ground or off the site.
And we have the ability to meet and follow all regulations as defined by EPA and Rhode Island DEM related to hazardous waste and reporting, as defined by industry and where applicable. Examples include, and they give those in the system, I don't think I need to list out those examples?
Yes.
And we will not during construction or thereafter have any adverse environmental impact on any water body or course in the Water Supply Protection Overlay District?
Yes, that's correct. We have a soil and erosion plan that needs to be followed with the construction of this application.
And the ability to meet the standards contained in 250-RI CR-150-15-3 for freshwater wetlands as defined by Rhode Island DEM, and we will not adversely affect an existing or potential water supply?
Yes, that's correct, and we do have a Ripley's approval from Rhode Island DEM on this project.
And we also meet the provisions of an acceptable soil erosion and settlement control plan designed and stamped by a licensed professional engineer?
Yes, that's correct. It's part of the application.
And all permitted and special use permits have to include a demonstration and use of best available control technology and industry best practices as outlined by Rhode Island DEM, the Department of Health, and the EPA where applicable. Have we done and will do that?
Yes.
And the location and description of any proposed facilities for refuse, storage, and disposal are appropriate?
Yes.
And contaminants of concern will be regulated as health standards become available by Rhode Island DEM and the EPA continuing to go forward, correct?
Yes.
And we have the ability to meet the standards contained in the Rhode Island DEM Stormwater Management Rules and Guidance?
Yes, that's correct, and we have a permit from Ripley's.
And same with the ability to meet the standards contained in the regulations for the Rhode Island Pollutant Discharge Elimination Systems, which I think you mentioned, I think we have the permit, but...
Yes, we have that permit.
And we have the ability to meet the standards contained in the Air Pollution Control Regulations?
Yes.
And same with the ability to meet the standards in the Oil Pollution Control Regulations?
Yes.
And then finally, the ability to meet the standards contained in the rules and regulations for underground storage facilities?
Yes, we, this application does not have underground storage.
Thank you. And then finally, as, as part of this approval, we're obviously seeking master plan approval. We've gone thoroughly through the planning board's findings. We, we of course agree with all of them as they are positive towards our application, that the land use element, we're expanding within the manufacturing areas, is noted in the comprehensive plan, which we're doing that exactly as part of our plan, encouraging private investment for the town. We're, although we're, we're exceeding building height, we're appropriately seeking the dimensional variance along with the special use permit, which this Board has. We're not creating any individual lots at all, because there's no subdivision proposed here, and we have plenty of adequate physical access to a public street. And in being so, we, we've also reviewed the planning's recommendations and stipulations, all six of them. I won't go through them one by one, but we have no objection to them and, and we agree with all of them. So with that being said, I think it's appropriate at this time to open up questions to the Board as that concludes our presentation, and I have the engineer here to answer any questions that I don't know.
I think it'd be helpful if you walked through some of the other documentation, like you have elevations, we had asked for that, and you did provide them, which we appreciate.
I'll have the engineer do that.
That'll be helpful to see the height variances, all that kind of stuff.
Certainly.
Okay.
Can we bring those up? I do, as a P D F. Sheet S10 has all the elevations on it.
Right there.
From all directions.
Right there, right there. There we go. There we go, there we go.
So basically, what you're looking at here are the elevations in all four directions, north, south, east, and west. As you can see, from the western elevation, that's pretty much where the, the loading area is.
That's the Providence Pike side, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Nick, can you walk us around the building?
Yeah, and, yeah, one of the, one of the things is to point out, where is it actually 37 feet above grade? Because it looks like it's not 37 feet above grade everywhere.
No, that's correct. Yeah, if we go back to the site, any one of the site plans.
Oh.
C, probably C6. So the side that faces the south, the industrial side, would have the lowest elevation. There's about a 12 foot difference, and the northerly side.
The northerly side is kind of like the baseline, isn't it, for the, for the grade?
Yeah, so it'll be at its peak. It's, the lowest elevation on the site is the northerly side. As it goes from north to south?
Yeah, it slopes down.
It, it, it picks up, the elevation will pick up, the, the grade elevation picks up to industrial.
So...
So, so the ground is highest here?
Right.
Lowest on the northerly side. So the most building exposure is on the northerly side?
It's along the railroad tracks.
Along the railroad tracks. That's less visible.
Well, and of course, the rest of, a lot of that is the original building anyway.
Yes.
So along the north side, I'm sorry, the south side?
Yes.
Where it's, looks like it's about 20, 20 feet or so, 24 feet elevation?
Yeah, somewhere around there, exactly.
It looks like, is that also, is that a retaining wall that is shown on the elevation, or?
We just have grading at that point. There, there is some retaining wall on the eastery side where the driveway comes in to the 20 car parking lot.
Okay.
So there's a small retaining wall there. But, but actually, it, it pretty much grades right around at the intersection of Providence Pike and Industrial.
Hang on. In the west elevation, yeah, okay. All right.
There, there is a small retaining wall along Providence Pike where the driveway access is to the loading dock.
Sure. Does anybody else have anything on that? No. No. Okay. Okay, thanks for that. Any other questions?
Back when the application was in front of the Board, there was conversation and mention that there was some type of equipment or something that was related to the KB process that was to the northern side of the property, right on the property line, which was encroaching on somebody else's property. Has that been rectified? On this plan, it shows still some squares there.
I think it's actually railroad property. Yeah, it was like either cooling equipment or something like that.
We don't know. So I, I have the owner applicant here, but they're, they're indicating to me that they don't know, so I don't know the answer to that.
If memory serves, it was a silo type of device that was...
So that, so I'm being told that it's gone?
Okay. All right, thank...
Thank you.
I think, I think you're up.
We're on. Okay, thank you. One of the ques, I just have a couple of questions. For the signage, I didn't, I know we talked about that in the past for a right turn only for the trucks. I didn't see any reference of that on any of the plans. I know that's in our stipulations, and if you're amenable to that, that's great. I would like to take it one step further. If there could be any pavement markings or striping that would indicate that to the truckers, to make sure that they know that trucks are right-hand only, I think that would certainly help in avoid any cause for having 18-wheelers go over the Stone Arch Bridge.
Nope, that's a great suggestion, and we would just have that amended as part of that stipulation to include that.
Okay. How are you going to be, obviously, there's significant grade changes. How are you going to be addressing the earth removal on this portion? Are we, you know, obviously, it's not a cut and fill situation, so I'm just curious how that's being processed?
Yeah, we, we would have to have, anything removed from this site would have to be tested first before it can be removed.
Okay. And then, let's see, I just have another question. If there, if you were going to be maximizing, you, you have a great area that we would very much like to see the use of solar on top of the, of top, on top of the building. Is there any plan for, you know, future readiness for solar power on, on top of the roof?
Would we have solar on the...
Come up here.
Yep.
Come up here.
If you could.
Introduce yourself.
And if we could have him sworn in, too?
Is there a way to tell the truth before this Board? Yes. What's your name and address? Brian Beck, one of the owners of the property. We have solar on the existing building right now, and our plan was to put solar on that to connect the two.
Perfect.
And extend, because I believe only about 70% of the existing building has solar, so with the new systems, we're going to put solar on both, finish the existing building and then the new building.
All right.
So yes, we do have plans for solar.
All right, thank you. And then...
Yeah, I think that addresses all my questions.
Dr. Benoit?
I would like to know if they will be storing any hazardous waste in this warehouse?
So, well, no, because I think that would be against the, well, whatever would be allowed by rules could be, but they don't have an actual tenant ready to occupy the space yet. So the idea is to get an approval, have, have a footprint, and then hopefully find someone to partner with on a build out or, or lease or something. So there's no, but I mean, my quick answer is no, because right now there is not one, no.
So the primary intent is to lease these space if possible?
Yes.
Not necessarily for an expansion of their existing buil, business?
You're correct.
Thank you.
In turn, one of the other things we talked about in the first meeting was for the residents, you have the resident, particularly on the, on the west side, but also for the area along the industrial drive. Obviously, you know, we're, town's very proud of industrial drive, you know, we want to see everything built nice. There's a lot of very cleanly landscaped properties there. This one needs to be the same, but, but particularly on the, on the west side, the building is now sort of, it's getting closer to the, to the road, and you have some houses directly across the street. We talked about some sort of foliage or, you know, evergreen foliage to, to soften instead of just looking at a warehouse.
Yeah, we understand that. I, I believe that's one of the conditions. We will have a registered landscape architect come up with a plan with some screening in there. We, we do have to remove, or we did have to remove as a condition of our RITOT PAP approval, some trees along Providence Pike, so we need to replace those with, with a screening.
Oh, right, right, because there's some deciduous trees there now.
Yeah. So we don't have that plan in this set right now, but that will be forthcoming as it is a condition.
My, my suggestion is to replace those, but add evergreens closer to the building.
Sure.
That'd be, that'd be good. Thank you. So, so that's going to be shown at, at the final?
Yes.
Okay. Any males have anything? We should open up a public hearing.
If there's nothing else, I'll make a motion to open up the public hearing.
We have a motion to open the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Public, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is open at 7:25. If anybody would like to speak on this project, please go up to the podium, address, introduce yourself, address all questions to the Board, and then we'll get them answered for you. One at a time.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
All right. We have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
We have a second, those in favor?
Aye.
It still says 7:25, so...
It's a new record.
That, that is a new record for a public hearing, so mark it, mark it on your calendar. I was there, okay? All right. Well, with that, I...
You want that officially on the meeting?
Yes. So our first, first order of business is on the dimensional here, on the dimensional... So our first, first order of business is on the dimensional here, on the dimensional variances. Ms. Telesio, do we need to vote on each variance separately, I believe?
You need to acknowledge, you need to, you need to recite the basis of each element.
Right, but do we vote on each one independently?
No.
No, okay, so take it as a whole, okay.
Mr. Chairman, there's one-dimensional variance. So the dimensional variance would have to be voted on individually. Then the special use permit would be voted on separately.
Understood, okay.
Then the plan review.
Gotcha, okay. So, dimensional variance.
I'll make a motion to approve the dimensional variance of two feet.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
And for the record, will you incorporate the find, the recommended finding of the planning board?
Along with the findings of the planning board.
As in support thereof?
Yeah, thank you. So we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Full call vote on this?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Ms. Menard?
Yes.
Ms. Dossier?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Next, the special use. Any comments on the board, any discussion before we take a motion?
Mr. Vice Chairman, in this one, the actual testimony from the element, elements came from the engineer himself. So if you were going to make a positive recommendation, you would say, with regard to elements one through thirteen, the board accepts and incorporates the testimony of Mr. Papiano.
Okay. Thank you.
In support thereof, and as part of your motion, if you can do that, I appreciate it.
Okay. You want me to just say, "So moved"? Perfect, "So moved". Okay, so we have a motion to approve the special permit. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Dr. Benoit?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Ms. Menard?
Yes.
Ms. Dossier?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So now, the main event.
Major land development approval.
Yes.
Okay.
So now it's a combined master plan and preliminary plan.
Right, okay. All right. You guys don't want to say anything, and I can just say, "So moved"?
No, no, no. Just kidding.
You could just say, "You move approval and incorporate the planning department's findings and recommendations."
Well, we just have, we just have one modification to the stipulation number one.
Yeah, so I, I can read that into the record, and it would read that the driveway located on Providence Pike shall include signage and pavement markings prohibiting right-turn access for tractor-trailer and semi-trailer trucks to prevent access to the railroad Streetstone Arch Bridge.
Right-turn access on exit? Yes.
Right.
Okay. Feel like I'm Abbott Costello, right? Right.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the special, the major land development with the stipulations as amended and outlined in our agenda.
In the planning fi, in the planning office findings.
And planning office findings.
Right. Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We do. Dr. Benoit?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Ms. Menard?
Yes.
Ms. Dossier?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So the project's approved.
Thank you very much for your time, and thank you, staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Shall we? Okay, next on the agenda, public meeting, amendment to the zoning ordinance text and town's zoning map for Pound Hill Realty. Skrull, just give us a little intro, pick up where we left off.
Mr. Chairman, this is a continuation of the meeting from February thirteenth. The applicant is here requesting a recommendation to the town council with regard to a zoning and map amendment creating an overlay district designation of Special Management District One to allow earth removal and quarrying operations. I believe the planning board accepted testimony and took some public testimony at the last meeting at the request of the applicant and, and the opinion of the board. That meeting was continued to this evening for continued presentation by the applicant. I think they had some experts that weren't available in the first evening, as well as, you know, the recommendation would be to take any public comment after the testimony from the applicant. The board can either make a decision tonight. It's a recommendation to the town council. No, no decisions here by the board are approving or denying the project, simply a recommendation to the town council, or if need be, continue to the next available planning board meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Skrull. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. William Landry for the, for the applicant. Since we were here on the thirteenth, we returned to the council for a couple of hearings. Very lengthy hearings, very well-attended. The, the thrust of what we've done since we've been here last is to try to share facts through expert sources about the condition of the property today and about the impacts that are being generated from this quarrying operation on the surrounding area, on nearby homes, on nearby wells, on the aquifer, on the stability of the landfill, the superfund sites that surround about half of this property. There's been a lot of comment about those matters and a lot of interest in those matters because very little of that information has ever come to the attention of the town through nobody's fault, but because of the, of the uniquely regulated nature of this area, the proximity of the superfund sites, the EPA jurisdiction over them and over us, the DEM jurisdiction over them and over us, the state fire marshal jurisdiction with respect to blasting over us, and all the reports that are required to be filed, those all go to the state. Very little of that comes to the town. So it's impossible for you to know the true magnitude of these impacts. Part of our proposed text amendment and overlay zone here is a transparency element that requires complete transparency and reporting to the town with respect to every aspect of all of those impacts I've just described. For example, we have a witness tonight who's going to address the issue of blasting. Every single blast on this property for the last twenty years or so has been monitored by seismographs to determine precisely the impact at a number of receptor points. Every blast has been reported on to the state fire marshal's office. We have a very precise understanding of the impact of the, of the blasting and the scope of the blasting impacts. We're going to share that with you tonight as we, as we shared it with the, with the planning board. We had hoped tonight to have both Bob Ferrari, the water expert, and Richard Grohl, the blasting expert, testify. Mr. Ferrari is, is residing in Florida in the winter. He's got some complications associated with a move and, and couldn't make his scheduled trip to Rhode Island tonight. So we're going to have to hold off his presentation. That's probably not a material thing for tonight because given the level of interest in these issues and the importance of these issues and the number of questions people have had, we've only been able to get through one witness each night at the council. We spent a whole night with Mr. Ferrari and barely finished his presentation. He had so much to say about the condition of the site, the purity of the, of the water on the site, the lack of contamination to the site as a result of there being no hydrological connection between any, any of the site or any wells associated with it and the superfund site, the western sand and gravel superfund site, and the impossibility of any pollutants from the superfund site being introduced to this property or adjoining properties as a result of any type of activity that's occurring at the quarry. He described that the property has achieved a unique status and certification at DEM of being a zero-discharge property, which means there is no hydrology on the project that permits anything that's, that's contaminated to flow toward the property. All the directional flow of the groundwater is from east to west. And the, and quarrying would not disturb that. What could disturb that is if somebody started digging wells and changing the underground hydrology and the fractures in the bedrock, and, and that, that could pose a threat to the aquifer, but not the current quarrying activity. He went through the years of testing that's been done, the series of berms and detention ponds that's been created to make sure that that hydraulic connection remains constant, that it's repaired. There was testimony about significant rainfalls that occurred a year, a year and a half ago that caused some of those berms to erode. People thought that the aquifer was being pierced when, in fact, that was simply erosion of the, of the hydraulic protection system that keeps that aquifer safe by maintaining that hydraulic connection, how that, that condition was repaired and how that series of berms and ponds is absolutely essential. And the continued presence on the site of an active industrial activity is necessary for the continued maintenance and monitoring of that area so that it does remain in place. So Mr. Ferrari will, will be here to explain, you know, all of this to you. He also addressed the unsuitability of the site itself, our site, for residential development in, in the future, given its proximity to the superfund sites and the potential damage that could be caused by residential wells. The comprehensive plan already prohibits the extension of water or sewer into that area, into a similarly situated area near the landfills. So there, there isn't going to be any residential development in that area. If I'm recalling his testimony correctly, he addressed that issue of residential development in those conditions with the former head of the Rhode Island Department of Health and the current head of the Rhode Island Department of Health. And the response was along the lines of "Over my dead body", which, which is a fairly firm, firm response. So he, unfortunately, isn't able to tell you that tonight. He told the council, "We do expect to have him here at the next session." We, we also have a Michael Hammond who's going to address dust impacts. And in all likelihood, Christine Givens with Engineering Technologies, who is scoping and undertaking an air quality test of particulate matter to determine whether it's dangerous, if there's a silica content, how far it spreads, and to provide a mitigation program to the extent necessary to address any conditions that are identified as a result of that testing protocol. It's a very rigorous protocol. Mr. Hammond will describe his own work on this site, monitoring dust and particulate matter for silica, and how all the employees wear these monitoring devices. They're in the middle of the action where the greatest danger exists. They're not hundreds of feet away from the quarry like the nearest residence, residences are. They're right there, and they're constantly monitored, monitored and tested. He's a former official of the Bureau of Mine Safety. He can describe how that works and how stellar the results have been for the absence of any, any silica. The, the interesting thing that has come out of that whole dust discussion is that there is sand on the site. There is a relatively rare, high-quality, high deposits of sand, especially in the areas closest to the few houses. Those are several hundred feet away, but the, the closest parts of the quarry are not hard rock and granite. They are substantially that very white, high-quality sand, it's like beach sand. And it does blow around in the wind, and some people can mistake that, that sand. That's not dangerous. It can't be ingested in the lungs. It doesn't contain silica. Some people on high-wind conditions may mistake that, that sand as something else. But those, and I don't want you to accept this from me, those, that position, those positions will be presented to you by real subject matter experts on those issues. Tonight, we'd like to present the, the blasting expert, Richard Grohl. He'll describe his own qualifications, but he's been involved in monitoring the blasting on this property for, since two thousand and three, I believe, right through testing that occurred as recently as a couple of January, I think, of this year. I'm not sure if those test results have been generated yet. I think they, have they just been generated? They have been, okay, good. So we're up to date as to the results of the most recent testing. He'll talk you, talk to you about how much time each month and year there are actual blasting and how the, how many seconds there are each, each year of actual blasting. It may, it may surprise you, but I'll leave it, I'll leave it to him to explain that, that to you. And I know that we've got on the table a number of conditions that we put in our draft ordinance. There were some very good suggestions made by the planning board with respect to other conditions. There've been issues about the height of the berm and how far away it should be. In our view, the, the decisions to be made on those things are greatly informed by a full understanding of what the impacts are and how closely things are being monitored right now and what those monitoring efforts have shown. We're almost there with the, with the air quality testing, so we'll have the complete picture on that. We do have the complete picture on the water and on the blasting, and we'll be presenting the blasting tonight through Richard Grohl. So if, if there are any questions for me before we do that, I'm, I'm happy to respond to them. Or if there are any particular concerns of the board that you'd like this expert, Mr. Grohl, to address, we could talk about two, that too.
Just real quick. So I know you said some of those other tests are still ongoing. When do you expect, and maybe you said it, so I apologize. When do you expect to have those other outstanding tests completed?
The, the air quality...
And the water quality?
The water quality tests have been ongoing forever. We've got the full story on that, on, on water quality. We've got the blasting results, the air quality testing of dust particulates, and a mitigation program that would be suitable to whatever that produces could possibly be ready by your next meeting. I'm looking for my client, maybe not, someone say, "Maybe not." Bob, sorry. Christine, is it two weeks, three weeks, a month? Couple of weeks, two weeks, maybe? So I, I think there's a, there's a chance we'll ha, we'll have the actual test results, and she'll be able to be here for your next meeting.
Okay, and then will those ever be turned over to like, to either the planning board or the council or the town in general for, you know, review as, you know, the experts are presenting them a little bit in advance?
And as the experts are presenting them, very shortly... As the experts are presenting them, very shortly thereafter. Part of our draft bill is to, at least once every year, provide an update to the town on every permit and state regulatory contact that we have, what all the outstanding permits are, what inspections there were, what test results there were, what violations there were, what complaints there were, and how they were responded to. We were asked by the council to make that available as if we, as if, as things exist right now during this, this process. And we will do that as part of this process without, you know, waiting till the end of this year to make those reports. We'll make, we'll make, we'll, we'll provide the contemporary information on all of those environmental reports. And there are five-year reports that are issued by the, by DEM in conjunction with EPA on the condition of the landfills next to us, the stability of the soils in the landfills, the cover. And those results have been available to us and they're, they're constantly monitored and, and Mr. Ferrari will be presenting some information about that as well.
Anyone else? Did you want to go?
You know, if I, if I could just suggest something, you know, there've been, there've been some concerns about the, the comprehensive plan that, that, to the effect that the vision for the property is residential REA, residential estate, agricultural, some type of residential use. And there are aspirations in the comprehensive plan that this, this property should be, care should be taken, that there's no damage to the aquifer. And those are great aspirations. But as the staff report, your staff report noted, that's proposed development as opposed to existing non-conforming uses that have built-in expansion rights. This whole business of excavation being a diminishing asset and the, the special rules that apply to excavation as a non-conforming, a lawful non-conforming use, that it is allowed to expand because to say that you can't excavate anymore in a new area means you can't carry out that use because by its own nature, it's constantly moving and increasing or else it stops. So there are unique rules applicable to, to mining. And so the comprehensive plan wants to make sure the aquifer is protected. We've got a non-conforming use. We've got a, a single parcel that's been merged by, by zoning. We've got very little reporting coming out of it. Our feeling is that the comp plan doesn't really help us by saying that there, there should be care taken to protect the aquifer and there should be low-density residential housing there because those things are not going to happen in the normal course, you know, maybe not even in our, our lifetime. But what can happen, and this is what our overlay seeks to be, is to create some planned aspect, to plan the non-conforming use, to establish parameters, to make sure that the objectives of the comprehensive plan for that area are being maintained and, and, and fulfilled no matter what's going on there, particularly with this operation. There's an awful lot of material left to be mined and a lot of things that could continue to happen in the dark that would now be brought out to full transparency with the town where impacts can be measured in real time. Every time a blast occurs, the readings will tell you how much closer you can get to a particular area before there might be some potential issue that, that, that should modify the blasting protocol, things like that, that aren't available now so that the town has full transparency and light shed on every environmental aspect. And we've got some planning that, that, that is an overlay. It's, we're not changing the future land use map in terms of what the future uses are. We're establishing a planning element that doesn't exist now, which is to regulate the existing use on, on the property in a way that's not available with, with most non-conforming uses. So that, hopefully that clarification is, is, is helpful. The comp plan doesn't help us too much with this property. There needs to be some kind of unique site-specific zone here in order for the right kind of transparency to take place and for, and for both the town and the, and the, and the applicant to be, to be able to plan. So if I may, I'd like to have Mr. Grohl-
I'd like us to finish the questions from the-
Oh, of course, I'm sorry. Please.
Okay. I have a few.
Yes.
I have a few comments. You spent a lot of time talking about the sand, the dust, and there is concern about the silicon stuff. But in general, there's just, there's clearly just a general concern about, even if it is just sand, it's harmless. It's not harmless. When it comes over, it, it covers people's properties in some areas, which kills anything that's growing there. If it's reaching their houses, their vehicles, they have to clean them constantly. So there still needs to be some, I mean-
There does.
There still needs to be something done to prevent that. Another major concern, and, and what I'm trying to do is bring out the ones that don't require an expert.
Yes.
That's what I'm getting to. There's a lot of concern about the sound.
Yes.
And so we talked about, you know, some sort of acoustic barrier as well. And I think the combination of those two might in turn solve the berm issue because obviously they're going to be higher-
Correct.
-than the berm itself and higher than some arborvitae that you put in, right? So, so maybe that will take care of that problem as well. But there was a, a very, a number of people raised the concern about a current violation that's going on, which is that trucks are, are arriving before 7:00 AM on the weekdays, before 8:00 AM on Saturdays perhaps, and that machinery starts, the noise is starting before the, the allowed hours of operation.
Yeah.
So that's an, that's, that's a current thing. So what has been done about that?
Well, first of all, we, we don't agree that that is happening. People may have a perception that that's happening, but part of this proposed ordinance mandates a, the start time that's similar to the one that's in the road use permit, nothing before seven o'clock, and reduced hours on Saturday. I think it's seven to three.
I think it's eight.
That was one of the items that the board had, was in the listing of the board's, and that's fine. And that, that would, that would be part of this operation. There's very little that goes on there on a Saturday. And, and we've got people that, that run this plant that aren't familiar with, with people coming in before seven o'clock. Now, I mean, did it happen on occasion? Is there, is it, was there noise traffic that people thought was being generated by the plant? But that would be a very unusual thing. And Mr. Pez is here, he could address that directly. We don't think we've been doing that. If that's happened on our site, we shouldn't have been doing that and it can't happen, it can't happen again.
Correct. So, and, and the noise, is there another operation in the area that has some, you know, machinery?
Well, there's Holliston Sand and Gravel in the area. There's a lot of trucks that go up and down that road.
Well, specifically on the, the little private road or whatever it is-
No, there's not another-
That's, that's what they're talking about.
Facility there. Yeah. I mean, we don't have complaints from the people on that road.
I heard them on February 13th.
Oh, those weren't people that lived near the plant. The, the people near the, near the plant on that-
One of them, one of them is in a butter. One of the people that talked for a while is in a butter. So of course they live near it.
Well, I'd, I'd like to know who that, who that person is.
Rebecca De Cristofaro. She came up with a bunch of notes.
She doesn't live on that, on that access road.
No, no, no. She lives, she is in a butter to the property.
Yeah, no, she's south of there. Her property is very important to us.
Yeah, no, that's all I meant.
And we are speaking to her. Mr. Plunkett back here does, does intend to speak with Ms. De Cristofaro. She makes some very good points in, in her presentations. And there's a cluster, there, there are hundreds and hundreds of feet away from, from the quarrying activity, but that's the area that we think we have to pay attention to the most because that's the direction we're going into. We have the ability to protect those properties, you know, the, the type of the berm and the height of it and what's used for the sound attenuation is going to depend a little bit on the, on the, on the noise analysis and, and also the dust analysis. I think Mr. Grohl will say that it doesn't have much of an impact. The berming doesn't have much to do with the blasting and vibrations because that's not the same kind of thing. It's more for noise and visual impact. So we do want to address those issues. Our preference would be to reach an agreement on that with the butters themselves and to spend time with them. That sometimes doesn't happen, but we agree with you wholeheartedly, but the, the truck issue is another issue. Our clients have to get a road per, heavy truck permit from the town. The town manager is the one that issues that permit. Anyone with heavy trucks is required to do that. And they have to apply every year and it's renewed every year. And so, you know, there's, no one's saying there isn't enough road capacity for heavy trucks, but they have to post a bond to take care of road damage over time because they put more of an impact on the roads than other types of trucks. So we have, we have that permit and we have to keep it in place every year and we have to post the bond. And we have never been found in violation of the, of the, the road use permit for heavy equipment. So we're really not any different than anybody else when it comes to the, to the, to the truck traffic and, and this, and we don't believe there's any, you know, there's been talk about a traffic study. Traffic studies usually measure congestion and, and levels of service and they're just, there's a lot of trucks that are up and down that road, but they're not, there isn't congestion as a result of the, of the trucks. So in order to traffic, there probably would be no change in the level of service and it's probably a very good level of service given the capacity of the, of the, the main, the public roadways. But we do have to file, we do have to observe our road use, road use permit parameters every year.
If you want to.
Okay. I think this was just a follow-up question that was asked at the last meeting and it was said that there would be an answer. How much longer in operation is this quarry going to be?
There's, I, we don't have a precise estimate right now. It depends on what the market is, you know, the, this quarry probably, you know, if, if we had to guess, it could be 50 years or, or more of material there. But some years, there's more that's, that's withdrawn than others based on market conditions. Our concern about getting an arbitrarily, you know, low or just kind of a guesstimate low expiration point is that if you wanted to maximize the, the product and you were given a, a time that's less than its useful life, then you have to do it faster, you know? So the intensity of the operation would be, would be greater to beat the clock on, on some time period. So what we're, what we're really focusing on is to try to get, you know, the, the noise and the dust and, and the water and the blasting and, and the, those impacts confirmed as being very manageable and ex, at very acceptable levels and maintaining those levels and then maintaining the setbacks that, that we, we end up establishing, keeping the distances from those, those properties so that wherever this thing is proceeding, it's not going to have any more of an impact than it's, you know, than it's having right now and, or, or will not have after the mitigation of, and the berm is established. And we're, we're going to have to share this mic and please let us know if you're not hearing both of us. We may actually have to get a little closer to pull this, pull this off. I'd like you to begin by introducing yourself, describing your professional qualifications as an industrial seismologist, what that means, and then going on to discuss the nature of the contact you've had with the site over the years.
Good evening. My name is-
Speak into the microphone.
Good evening. My name is Richard J. Grohl of Richard J. Grohl Technical Services. I'm an industrial seismologist. I hold a bachelor's degree in geology from California University of Pennsylvania and a master's degree in earth science from California University of Pennsylvania. I have been engaged in the work of industrial seismology since April 1st of 1989 and have monitored blasting and other construction vibrations, performed pre-blast and pre-construction inspections and investigated claims on behalf of the insurance carriers of the blasting and construction contractors. Also specialized, my master's degree was specialized in sedimentology. I studied sand bodies and was trained as a petroleum geologist in my bachelor's degree. Also, I am an expert witness in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for issues of structural response and damage produced by surface mine blasting and construction blasting and in the state of Rhode Island for outdoor sound propagation.
Could you describe your, the nature of your contact with the, with the site?
I have been working at the site since 2003. I've been placing seismographs at the direction of the client and wherever the state regulations governing blast monitoring would require for a seismograph to be placed, which is the closest structure to any blast site. Each blast is monitored with multiple seismographs, typically no fewer than four. The seismographs are placed in areas not just of where the highest exposure would be to an individual blast, which is the closest structure, but also places where there may have been complaints generated from previous blasts or where we might just want to know for academic reasons what kind of vibration levels we'd be getting in that area. The academic levels are more at the direction of the customer for the landfills that are near the site.
Okay. And in your profession, do you do the same type of work for other, other sites? Tell me approximately where they are and how many there are.
I currently monitor every blast at nine quarries in the region. There are two for Kimball Sand, two for La Russo Corp. There's Hillka Construction and Tiveda Materials. There's Onyx Corporation in Sterling, Massachusetts, and Genmore Enterprises in Ludlow, Massachusetts.
And you, do I understand correctly, you, you report these results to governmental entities?
That is correct.
All right. And could you describe for the board and the public what the regulatory structure is for the activity of blasting? Who supervises it and, and what are the pertinent requirements?
In the state of Rhode Island, the state fire marshal's office oversees and, and is the regulatory authority for blasting. The reports that I generate are sent to the state fire marshal's office after each blast. I turn all my reports over in the same, or I attempt to turn them over in the same calendar day that they were generated. Sometimes they don't go out until after midnight, but they do go out in the same waking hours. And the reports are also submitted to the quarry, to the blasting contractor, and there are times when people might request a copy and they get sent to those as well.
Right. Now, is there an element of neighborhood engagement that you regularly become involved in as you undertake these blast- in as you undertake these blasting monitoring activities?
Yes.
Could you describe it, please?
Well, before each blast, I have a list of people that I contact. What happens is that I'm directed to respond to a complaint that's been lodged with the regulatory authority at whatever quarry I might be working. So, I contact the property owner as soon as I'm made aware of the complaint and find out what the nature of the complaint is and then offer to bring a seismograph by. Due to the transient nature of a quarry, meaning that their blasts are never in the exact same spot twice, they always have to move over to the next spot of rock. Eventually, the people that might have complained about blasting six months ago might be at the opposite end from where current blasting is and so, I have to move my seismographs, being that they, I'm limited in the number of instruments that I have and the amount of time that I have to place them. And instead of placing seismographs at homes that may not have the highest exposure or are kind of gone out of the, out of the immediate area that's where the highest vibrations would be recorded or observed, what I do instead is I contact those property owners and let them know there's going to be a blast and if I do have an instrument to bring to them, I can take, offer to bring an instrument and if I do, do not, just let them know there is going to be a blast regardless. And what this does is it greatly heightens the awareness of the general population around the pit. I find that most people will talk, they'll converse either by email or phone or something like that and let other people know as well. Plus, everyone knows me and they see me driving down the street and they know when they're, when they see me that there's going to be a blast in the immediate future.
So, you've gotten to know many of the residential butters of this particular quarry?
Yes.
And, and where the seismographs get placed in relation to their properties?
Yes.
And is there also an effort to, to place a seismograph in the landfill itself to try to understand the vibration impacts on the landfill?
Yes, I've monitored both landfills for twenty years. Up until a couple of years ago, I was getting every blast at the Webster landfill, the one on Old Oxford Road. Unfortunately, two years ago, while I was setting up, my hips fell out of their sockets at the same time and I fell on my face and I was unable to keep walking back there any longer. There's no vehicle access to that landfill. You have to walk and it's seventeen hundred feet from Old Oxford Road to the landfill, so that's out of the question for me anymore unless somebody wants to give me a ride. The other landfill, which is the Western Sand and Gravel, that I monitor on each blast now and I have monitored when the blasting operations were closest to that landfill.
Okay, and could you tell us what this seismic, seismic graph looks like, how big it is and who actually is involved in placing it?
I place the seismographs. The seismograph is a box that is approximately one foot in length, eight inches in width, six inches in height, and it contains three components. There is the processor, which is the body. It's a little box usually about that big to a box that's foot by foot. The, there are two sensors in the seismograph. There is a, what's known as a geophone or a ground transducer and what it does is it breaks down the universal motion that occurs in the ground as vibration passes through the earth into three mutually perpendicular directions of ground motion. And what they're doing, in doing that design is they're breaking down orbital motion into vector motions of compressive wave, radial wave or transverse wave and vertical waves. And these three components are monitored for peak particle velocity and frequency, acceleration and displacement. And then, the second sensor that fits onto the processor is an air, or is a microphone that measures air over pressure or low frequency sound. Sometimes people refer to it as infrasound if it's down in the range of one to ten hertz. Air pressure from a blast typically is found in the range of one to one hundred hertz and therefore, that's why the microphone only has a frequency response of one to one hundred hertz. And this, what it does is it measures the component of sound from a blast, which is below the range of human hearing. The human ear can only pick up sound from about a thousand cycles to about four thousand cycles on average. As you get older, it starts out at around five hundred to eight thousand and by the time you get to my age, it's about a thousand to four thousand. And the sound that you get off of a blast is not audible. So, what you, because your ear is so small that the, the amount of motion that takes place doesn't fit efficiently through the ear canal, but instead engulfs the whole body. So, you feel the blast, but you do not actually hear the actual sound pressure. Well, what has been determined through research is that windows are the principal sensitive aspect of a structure to air over pressure and that the level of air over, peak over, peak air over pressure that is recorded near a building containing windows, if it exceeds one hundred thirty-three decibels, begins to have a chance of causing cracking in the windows. Realistically, well-fit new windows won't suffer change from air over pressure till you get around a hundred forty-two decibels, but because they're, not all windows are perfect, the Bureau of Mines instead chose to go with their most stringent and restrictive level of one hundred thirty-three decibels and that is using a two-hertz high-pass monitoring system in the seismograph, which is the basic industry standard. Most, most seismographs that you can purchase today use the two-hertz high-pass.
So, do I understand correctly, you've been monitoring the blasting at this particular site as far back as two thousand three, correct?
Yes.
And for the last ten years or so, you've got electronic versions of the test results for every single blast?
Uh, yeah, actually, until emails, I was faxing them and then, but yeah, every, every one that's gone through email, which has been over ten years.
And then, everything before that was paper, but you still have those somewhere in your possession? And in all events, they've all been shared with the state fire marshal's office, correct?
They should all-
And they're monitored by that. So, approximately how many of these seismic, how many blasts approximately are taking place over, over the years, each, each year at this, at this quarry?
Uh, on average, twelve. And-
So, you got, on average, one a month, correct?
Yes, one a month.
And how long does the average blast take?
A blast is not a single blast event, but in fact, is a sequence of charges that are loaded into holes drilled into the rock. The sequence of charges are all timed to detonate in at least a eight millisecond repetition and two holes which are detonated in hard rock, which are timed more than eight milliseconds apart from each other, produce two distinct pulses of vibration within the rock. But, the entire sequence might contain forty to sixty holes. So, within that entire sequence, the blast is going to be less than a half of a second in duration and that's including all of those holes being timed at a separate time.
Okay, so that's one blast that's several seconds.
So, the one blast would last about a half of a second and then there's a duration of one second for every thousand feet away from the blast that you are where the air pressure will arrive, which is another, less than, it's not even a half of a second for the air pressure to pass, it's less than the second.
All right, so if I'm understanding this correctly, then we're talking about milliseconds and half a seconds, but if there are twelve blasts a year, you're talking at about something around twenty seconds of blasting in a whole year on this site?
Yes, and over the life of the mine since nineteen fifty-eight would be, oh, say thirty seconds, it would be about fifteen minutes.
For the, for that, since, since two thousand three?
Uh, well, actually, since nineteen fifty-eight.
Nineteen fifty, fifteen minutes of blasting on, on the site.
Yes, and sixty years, sixty-five years.
Now, there was some folks that described this, what they see after a blast as a white cloud. I, I think that was the exact language that some people used and I, I believe it was delivered to the council and/or the planning board as an indication that there were, there was something dangerous occurring in that white cloud. Are you familiar with the phenomenon of a, of a white cloud appearing after blasting?
Yes.
Okay, and what's that all about?
The fundamental products that are formed as the result of the conversion of the explosives products is carbon dioxide and water. And water vapor, when is, in a visible cloud, is white, just like the clouds in, in the sky. And that's because it's absorbing and re- and reflecting all wavelengths of light equally. The other colors that you might see in a, in a cloud would indicate things like unspent ammonium nitrate, which would be orange, things like that, which don't really occur anymore. Primarily, the cloud that you see is just white from blasts today because the products have been greatly improved and the efficiency of the combustion of the products is greatly improved. That the almost entire product of detonation of combustion is carbon dioxide, which is invisible, and water vapor, which is a white cloud.
All right, so it's basically the same constituent aspects of a, of a real cloud, correct?
That is correct.
Now, is it, how do you go about determining whether your test results are getting into the territory where there might be an adverse effect from a particular blast on a neighboring property, a well in the area, or the adjacent landfill?
When a blast is first conceived, they, before anything is drilled out, the blasting contractor looks at the distance to the surroundings, the confinement of the material and what directions the material can be moved.
Okay, and how do you know whether a particular reading is in some kind of a danger zone for an adverse impact?
The contractor designs the blast so that they are at fifty percent of the legal limit at the closest structure and that if the readings are going over the fifty percent, then the blasting contractor looks to make adjustments in those delay sequences or in the weights of the explosive charges so that they can cause the vibrations to drop at that particular location.
Okay, and so, when it comes to, let's take a house. Some of these houses are several hundred feet away, a couple of them anyway, the couple that exist, so at the center of the, center of the site in this direction, in this area here. When it comes to a, a house, do I understand correctly that the, the tolerance thresholds for the limits look at that aspect of the house that's most likely to crack or crumble as a result of a blast?
Yes, the regulatory limits are based upon a document, which is United States Bureau of Mines Report of Investigations eighty-five oh seven. And in this report, there were a number of observations made on a total of fifty-four test structures that were in the path of an advancing surface mine. They meticulously marked and recorded the lengths of cracks in the walls, ceilings and floors of these buildings, homes, and before and after each blast went in and marked where the cracks were and where they were and if they had changed at all. They also set sensors on the ground, in the ground surface, about a foot below the ground surface on the side of the building closest to the blast site and they instrumented the inside of the buildings, on the walls, the ceilings, the floors, corners, mid-walls, to see what structure amplification factors there would be and also what level of vibration that was measured outside and inside was, would precipitate some form of damage. Eventually, they precipitated damage because the land that the homes were sitting on was consumed by the mine, so they drilled right up to them, tore the homes down and then took that land as well. So, we had a very good estimation of what vibration it would take to cause damage to any of the common construction materials. And what is found is that the weakest of the common construction materials is decayed horsehair plaster on wood lathe. And at higher levels of vibration, about thirty percent higher, drywall begins to suffer damage. About fifty percent higher than drywall damage, you begin to see damage to masonry. And then, above that, about thirty, thirty to fifty percent more than what would cause damage to masonry, unreinforced concrete would suffer damage. And what they're doing is there's, so what it takes to damage unreinforced concrete is at least a hundred percent more than it takes to damage plaster or drywall. And the design limitation that the contractor is obligated to maintain is to prevent damage to plaster and drywall by using a, a one hundred percent factor of safety in the blast design.
All right, so if I'm understanding that correctly, when you said earlier that the blasting contractor has to be bonded and licensed, correct?
Correct.
Has to blast at a standard that's not going to reach fifty percent of what might damage the most sensitive aspect of a house, which is the plaster on lathe, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, what about for, and you put your seismographs on the house itself in the manner that you've described so that that information can be identified, what the actual impact levels of the blasts are for each particular structure that you place a seismograph at?
Yes, what's been determined is that the best approximation of damage potential from vibration is to have the seismograph buried in the ground next to the foundation about a foot below the ground surface.
Okay, and those tolerances you've described from real fragile building components like plaster on lathe all the way through masonry, those aren't your conclusions? Is that an industry standard that the state fire marshal's looking at and that these contractors are designing against when they're trying to determine the magnitude of each individual blast?
The Bureau of Mines standard is actually the most highly, widely recognized standard and pretty much everybody follows that in regulatory, in the light of regulatory compliance and also in the, the physical design of blasting for day-to-day operations. It's found to be by a multitude of researchers and I can personally attest to the fact that the Bureau of Mines levels are very much protective of any component in a structure. I've monitored thousands of blasts and I have walked through about twenty-five thousand homes before and after blasting, not twenty-five thousand before, twenty-five thousand after, but total twenty-five thousand over the course of the last thirty-five years.
Okay, well, let's get away from houses and talk about potential impacts on a, on a landfill. There are some concerns that have been expressed here that the blasting could have an adverse effect on the landfill and somehow alter its hydrology such that contaminants could be introduced onto this site or perhaps to residences in the, in the surrounding area. Is there a, a rule of a similar industry standard with respect to the vibration or, or land disturbance impacts when, when it comes to a, a landfill?
Yes, actually, the radius of rupture around a, a charge- Yes. Actually, the radius of rupture around a charge hole drilled into rock is proportionate to the strength, the tensile strength of the rock and its confinement. Granite, generally speaking, has a rupture radius of about twenty-five times the diameter of the drilled hole in the rock. Most drilled holes are three to four inches in diameter, so the rupture radius is generally in granite about forty-eight, fifty inches. In shales, it's the weakest of the most commonly found rocks, the rupture radius might be as much as ninety times the radius of the hole. There is no fracturing beyond that rupture radius. Then you're in what's known as a zone of elasticity, where the material, when it is agitated by the passage of kinetic energy, first moves in a myriad of directions in universal motion very quickly, and then it returns to its initial position of rest.
Okay, and so when the seismographs, let's focus on the, on the two thousand twenty-four blasting, I believe, December of two thousand twenty-four, you did a, a report of a series of blasting episodes, correct? Blasting episodes in which seismographs were placed in two landfills?
Yes.
Okay. Including the western sand and gravel adjacent to this site, correct?
That was the day I put ten seismographs out. That was April tenth, two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-three, I believe.
Okay. And you commented on that in your report of what the, what the actual vibration disruption was in the soil of the landfills. And in your report, if I'm reading this correctly, you indicate that the settlement measured from the compaction of landfill contents is measured in feet. The vibrations recorded at both landfills had associated particle displacements, back-and-forth motions, which were approximately the thickness of a human hair, point zero zero one inch. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That was the extent of the impact on the adjacent landfill?
That's correct.
From that blasting. And then you say that the landfill materials are far more prone to suffer distortion and cracking from climatic moisture changes than from infrequent impulsive motions, which are less than a second in duration and are microscopic in scale, like a blast, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, so that takes, oh, by the way, you, have you reviewed the, do you review the five-year reports that are generated with respect to the, by the EPA with respect to western sand and gravel, and what types of information do you glean from those reports?
Yes, actually, I looked at both landfills for the five-year reports, and the EPA says that the landfills are performing at or above what their expectations were for the design of the containment.
All right, so there were no alarm bells going off with respect to the structure and the integrity of the earth in the landfills?
Right. There is normal maintenance of the landfills, where they have to groom the surface because precipitation does erode certain parts of it at times, or you might have areas that slowly settle or sink because the materials that they're confined have disintegrated. But as far as vibration is concerned, there's, there's no chance that you would cause any distortion to those materials at that level of vibration.
All right, and how, let's go back to the houses. How did the, what were the results of the testing with respect to the impacts on the most sensitive house component, the plaster-on-lathe?
All the readings have come out below the Bureau of Mines standards.
Okay. There's something, some reference in your report to point one-one inches per second, and that being somewhere about twenty-two percent of the, the limit for any particular blast in terms of impacts on houses?
Yes, I believe that was on the, the western sand and gravel.
Yeah, structure response and damage produced by ground. Vibration from surface mine blasting recommends limits on ground motion. Vibrations, a threshold for drywall?
Point seven-five inch per second.
Point seven-five inches per second, and then point eleven inches per second.
At the western sand and gravel, yes.
Okay. It was point one-one inch per second at western sand and gravel was the highest at the time. Okay. So these are, the results have been less than half of what the contractors are conservatively planning for, which is nothing more than fifty percent of the legal limit, correct?
That's correct.
And then, when it comes to masonry, the results of the blasting at this site were only four percent of the, of the limit, correct?
That is correct.
And similar very low results in the one to four percent range resulted from, for concrete and other building materials, correct?
That is correct.
Now, in all the years you've been studying the impacts of this thirty seconds or less of blasting at the site over the last twenty years, has there ever been a reading that's ever even come close to the half of the action limit for any type of protected area, be it a house, a well, or a landfill?
No, not as, there, no. It's, I can't remember all of the data, but they're generally fifty percent and less.
All right. Now, if there ever were a reading that you had that was getting close to not having enough of a cushion between the reading and the action level, what would you do, or what would the contractor do to, to address that?
Redesign.
So you'd do a, you don't do as big a blast, correct?
Right, or they will take the same blast and they will turn it, so to speak, so that the maximum direction of propagation is cast away from the closest structure.
Okay. And by the way, do I understand correctly that the blasting that occurs in this site, including the area where those houses are, you know, down here on the south end of the, south end of the property, this couple of houses, that the blasting actually occurs toward the middle of the site and not toward those properties?
Well, yes, because they're working from the edges of the pit, or, yes, from the edges of the excavation, and casting into the excavation, they cast away from the homes and into the open space in the center of the property.
Okay. So as you do these blasts over the course of the year, if you ever started to see and report to the town and to the state a, a level of disruption or vibration that starts to get closer to twenty or thirty percent of the legal limit, would you know that right away, that you were getting, that those houses could within, you know, potentially be impacted if the blasting continued in that direction?
Well, actually, every blast is-
Excuse me, Mr. Landry? Pardon interruption. You guys really need to try to stay focused using the microphone, please. Thank you. Sorry about that.
The, again, the-
Well, I'm trying to get into the issue of, of planning. If you're looking at a pattern of these blast test results, that starts to go from, say, you know, four percent to eleven percent to fifteen percent, and you're, you're getting a certain distance away from nearby houses, are you able to use that data to plan future blasting to either occur in a different location or at a different intensity to make sure that you don't get in, into something beyond the comfort zone?
There is wide latitude in blast design. Blast design has, the number of products and techniques that are available to the blasting contractor allow you to blast everything from elevator pits and swimming pools and basements of homes and commercial structures to very large road cuts and quarry blasts that are designed to move thousands of yards of rock.
So you can have blasts within an individual building-
Yes.
-that are designed not to cause damage to the building?
That is correct. I actually do jobs like that every once in a while.
All right. So the, the planning aspect of blasting is very precise, and, and it does permit planning of, that could change somebody's direction, intensity, as time went along, and if that information is shared with all relevant authorities, it's very transparent as to when and where there could potentially be a future problem, correct?
Yes, actually, the blasting contractor is kind of obligated to be in the immediate with that planning, where every blast they do, they look at their results from the previous blast, and they look at what they can expect from the next blast, and they plan accordingly. It's a, it's a transient process, so that there, it's, the surveillance that's performed by the blasting contractor is fairly, fairly thorough, to say the least.
Okay. But there, at least, there is an opportunity for early identification of potential future problems, future issues down the road that need to be managed?
Yes.
I think that's all I have with Mr. Groll at this time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Is there questions or comments from the board before we open up the public hearing? Do you want to add anything?
Yeah, I'll go first.
Okay. Certainly. Okay. Thank you. Just, just in case you feel like you need to roam around, this way you can stay.
It's on, right? Thank you. I just have, I have one more question, please. Mr. Groll, I, I meant to ask you also about the impacts on wells, residential wells in the area. Could you describe to me what the sensitivity of residential wells are to blasting activity, and what the tolerances are, and whether there have ever been any readings that suggest any potential damage to anybody's well?
The Bureau of Mines also performed a water well study, which was performed in a manner very similar to the house, the residential structure study that was performed in front of the path of an advancing surface mine, but instead of monitoring houses, they were actually monitoring water wells. They put sensors at the ground surface and on the bottoms of the wells, and they measured the vibration from each blast as the blasting approached the wells and eventually consumed the rock that the wells were founded in. Water well is the most resistant structure on the property to vibration. The well is drilled circularly into a solid elastic medium rock through the top of the material that's over the rock, which is overburden. The part of the wellbore that is drilled through the overburden, the disenfranchised rock material at the surface, is cased with three-eighths-inch thick steel, and it's a perfectly circular tube. That tube is indestructible. You would have to physically glue explosives to it to cut it, and it wouldn't crack because it's steel. The rock that's down below that, where the, what, how the well is advanced is they drill what's known as a pocket from the surface down to about fifteen feet into the top of bedrock, and then they descend the casings down into that pocket, and they backfill the bottom of the casing with crushed drill cuttings and mixed with cement sometimes. They don't always do that, is my understanding, but most times they do. Then they put a six-inch bit inside of the casing, and they complete the well in rock. So that is a solid steel casing embedded in ten to fifteen feet of rock, at least four to six feet below the ground surface, and typically it's more like about anywhere from ten to a hundred feet below the ground surface. The rock material itself is resist, is resistant to about twenty-five inches per second if it's weathered granite. It can be as much as double that, or it can be less than that if the rock is so weathered that it's actually not any longer considered to be competent rock, but instead would be considered to be rotten rock, which they do not blast rotten rock by regulation of it anywhere. It's, it's very dangerous and illegal. So the material that your well is drilled into, being solid rock and being cased with steel, is anywhere from about twelve times more resistant to as much as a hundred times more resistant than plaster and drywall. And the levels of vibration that were recorded in the study was high as five-point-four-four inches per second, and they did not observe any change in the water quality or quantity within any of the wells that were part of the study.
All right, and you, you referenced that study in your December twenty-twenty-four report, correct?
Correct.
And you indicate that with respect to the testing on this site, which showed point one-one inches per second disruption from vibration, that was only two percent of the maximum observed ground motion in the study that you described. So it's only two, two percent of the limits that that study would produce for similar, for groundwater wells?
Correct.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I do have a correction to something that, that I said about Mr. Hammond. One of the hazards of having a lawyer paraphrase his experts, but Mr. Mr. Hammond is going to testify about devices worn by employees of the quarry. They don't wear them all the time, and it's not every employee all the time. The Bureau of Mine Safety or whoever does this does conduct periodic testing in a, in a, in a, in organized way, but it, I may have created the potential that everybody walks around every day with a monitor. That's not the case, but he'll explain what really happens.
But thanks for clarifying that, because that was the impression.
Yes.
Okay.
That's all I have for now. Thank you.
If the board has nothing further, I'm-
Can I ask one question?
Oh, absolutely.
Just about the blasting, real quick. So if there's been, you threw out a lot of information, so if there's been multiple blasting in a specific area or a specific zone, can the fractured rock over time, or the rock itself over time, cause vibrations to be stronger even below, below the surface? Can you definitively say that the vibrations are intense in certain areas?
Uh, no, the intensity of the vibration is a function of distance and charge rate per delay, and the-
So the rock itself has no impact?
No, the rock itself is not going to change in either composition or enfranchisement as a result of vibration, the elastic waves, any more than twenty-five times the radius of the drill holes. So about five feet away from the drill holes, the rock stays as the rock was before. It's simply, it simply activates elastic motion outside of that radius, twenty-five times the radius of the draw.
Okay, and then just real quick, maybe you said it, maybe you didn't. How far is the closest seismograph from the blast? Isn't there a recommended distance? I'm just curious.
Oh, no, it's wherever they are blasting, we have to put a seismograph at the closest structure. So if they're blasting thirty feet from a house, we have to be at that house. If they're blasting a thousand feet from a home, then that's the closest one.
So you don't have to put it like ten feet from the blast? It's not from the epicenter of the blast, it's from however far from?
It's all in relation to the surroundings.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay. Time to open the public hearing now. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Groll. Mr. Groll, thank you very much. Okay, thank you, Mr. Groll. Mr. Groll, thank you very much.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
We have a motion to open the public hearing. Do you have a second?
Second.
We have a second. So those in favor?
Aye.
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 Posed? No? Public hearing is open at eight forty-six. Anybody who wishes to speak, you get your hand up first. Please come up. I do want to add one, I, I do need to make a comment before you start talking. There has been, as, as, um, we pointed out earlier, there's been a lot of information, um, shared publicly and all that. I want to remind everyone that the planning board is not a judiciary board. It has no judiciary power, anything like that. We have no say in legal matters, past or potential future ones. We need to stay focused on the, the merits of the application before us, in this case for the, you know, the merits of, of, uh, you know, the ordinance change that they're proposing. That's what we need to be focused on. So I would ask everyone to, to avoid conversations about legal matters since they have, they're not pertinent to us, and we're not to include in them in our considerations. And I'll ask just, Mr. Aliozzi, could you?
That, that's correct. That's an accurate, um, description of your role.
Okay, thank you. So, if you could introduce yourselves.
Lee Angellette, forty-nine Orchard Street. Um, this request, in my opinion, is not in alignment with our town's comprehensive plan. As the planning board, I believe you have the duty and the obligation to uphold and to follow the comprehensive plan, and to require that all businesses within this town follow all ordinances, zoning, and comprehensive plan. Requesting a new zoning district that isn't even a part of our comprehensive plan is not the purpose of the comp plan. Zoning is to be followed. I believe the town is putting itself on shaky territory by spot zoning. Spot zoning is when you start making exceptions everywhere, then what is the purpose of the comprehensive plan? I would also like to address the fact, and I know you just mentioned a legal matter. This is somewhat of a legal matter, but it's also in the agenda for tonight, so it's the only reason I'm bringing it up, if that's okay. Based on my research, could be wrong, but my research, this lot is not pre-existing non-conforming as it states on your agenda. I would like someone from the town hall offices or boards, someone, to do their due diligence regarding this, whether it's the solicitor, the planning board, the zoning officer, the planner, town administrator, someone to figure this out. What I have found out is this piece of property, thirty-two point three acres, was purchased by Leonard and Constance Pezza in nineteen eighty-seven. It was not purchased by the original owners of the original piece of land that consisted of fifty point six-nine acres. According to the warranty deed that is recorded in the clerk's office, this is not one lot. It is not being taxed as one lot. This is an abutting lot, and it was purchased after the nineteen seventy-nine zoning ordinances were established regarding earth and mining extraction. When you look at our comp plan, there are far more areas that this request does not fit into than where it does. It's time, in my opinion, for our town-appointed and elected officials to stand up for the health and safety of its residents and put us first. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Aliozzi, is there anything you'd like to comment on that before we move on?
No, it...
Okay.
These are matters that obviously are well, well-traveled.
Yes, okay, thank you. Ms. DeCristofaro.
Rebecca DeCristofaro, nineteen thirty-one Pound Hill Road. My ears must have been ringing a little bit. I heard that my name came up before.
It did.
Um, and that's, and that's, you know, perfectly fine. It was something that I mentioned the last time we met at the town council hearing, and, um, I, I'd like to just personally confirm that I, I do in fact feel quarry operations prior to seven AM. Um, I feel vibrations in my home as early as six, six thirty, six forty-five. Um, additionally, yes, the quarry is not supposed to operate until seven o'clock in the morning, but until very recently, the Apple Valley Oil Truck did, um, actually go to the quarry sometimes as early as five forty-five in the morning to deliver oil, which means that the gates would have been open, um, prior to seven AM. Um, and if we're saying that what I'm feeling on a regular basis is not quarry operations, then I would be happy to probably partner with Jason Richer, who could put a drone up in the air that early in the morning to confirm whether or not what I'm feeling is or is not quarry operation. So I just wanted to make that mention. Um, I also wanted to make mention to Mr. Groll's, um, information as far as this white cloud of dust in the air. It, it is something that I have witnessed, and I'd really appreciate if you could provide any source information that states that that white cloud that we see is water vapor. A quick Google search asking whether or not this is water vapor, there are zero results. Um, the only results that I, you know, the countless results that I do see are that it is actually fugitive dust. Um, and then I assume that fugitive dust, you know, it's, it's an important matter because why would DEM or OSHA have regulations regarding fugitive dust if that wasn't the case? Um, it...
Just direct everything this way.
Sorry, sorry. Um, I, what was my next question? Um, well, I do have a question about the components of fugitive dust, but I guess that would be more for Mr. Groll, so I don't know.
We can take it down.
Okay, excellent. So we're stating, I mean, Mr. Groll has previously stated, and I think that was actually at the last planning meeting, that a component of granite is silica. Um, I think he said it's around twenty percent or so. I don't want to misquote that. He can, um, he can confirm that. But silica dust is, silica is a component of granite. Granite is what they mine at that quarry. So if there is fugitive dust on the quarry, right? I, I know that Mr. Landry was saying before that they do wear monitors to monitor the level of fugitive dust or exposure to dust on the quarry. I would like an understanding of whether or not that dust does contain silica, if silica is a component of granite. Um, so that's just...
And to clarify, you're, you're asking based on if the cloud that results from the blast?
Well, I guess any fugitive dust that's on the quarry. So fugitive dust happens during quarry operations, but fugitive dust also happens per every Google resource that I've, you know, read. Fugitive dust is a byproduct of blasting. Um, and then I do have one other question clarifying conditions that were outlined in the agenda. So there was condition one and condition three. I don't want to summarize. I don't have it right in front of me. Um, but I would just like an understanding of condition three that was a no-cut zone, a hundred-foot no-cut. Condition one is a two-hundred-foot setback, so I would just like some clarification on that.
Mr. Groll, please.
So basically, um, two-hundred foot would be the extent of the activity?
They can't come within two-hundred feet?
Correct.
Okay.
And then the one-hundred foot is like a vegetated buffer no-cut zone. That's the recommendation. And the expectation would be somewhere after the one-hundred foot no-cut zone would be that berm with, as we are recommending, some kind of a sound barrier or wall on top of it?
Sound barrier and dust barrier.
So within that second one-hundred feet, that would be located.
Okay, so it's the one-hundred feet of vegetation before the berm, then there's the berm potential sound barrier, then the two-hundred feet, and that's...
No, no. Two-hundred foot from the property line in.
Yeah.
The first one-hundred feet is recommendation is a no-cut buffer, so that's going to remain vegetated, no-cut. After that...
After the one-hundred of the two-hundred?
Yeah, so it's one-hundred and, one-hundred and one-hundred.
Okay, I would, I don't, I don't like that recommendation, as in a butter. Um, I think currently we have a, around a two-hundred-foot vegetated buffer.
Are you talking about, like, on the aerial there?
I'm sure.
So that's about...
Yes.
So that's about two-hundred feet now?
This is the line that they're suggesting, fifty feet within the property line. And then that's about, from that black line-ish or the property line, the dotted line, that's about a two-hundred-foot vegetated buffer.
Okay.
So I would, as a resident, I would, in a butter, I would prefer that we keep at least two-hundred feet of vegetation that acts as a noise nuisance barrier, a dust barrier. It also allows me to not see the quarry. They just raised a number of trees up to that line already, and I can see light between my, at least four acres of trees, and then another two-hundred feet of, of vegetated buffer. So I like the two-hundred-foot no-cut with the berm.
Yep.
Okay. In a perfect world, if Rebecca could have it, that's what my, my recommendation is.
All right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Um, Mr. Groll, would you like to address the, uh, question of the fugitive dust and the, and the production of, of the silica that comes out of that, please?
The water vapor and carbon dioxide are the principal components of combustion. Dust that comes out of the blast is going to be variable depending on how wet the rock is. Uh, if it's very dry, there will be more dust. If it is very wet, there will be less dust. But in the right atmospheric conditions, when you see the white cloud wafting away from a blast site, it is primarily water vapor. The sand and, uh, the sediment that would come out of the air would drop very quickly as a result of it being too heavy to stay in suspension in the air. And the breathable component of any dust that comes out of anything that's going on out there is going to be just the part of it that is in the microscopic range. It's PM-ten and PM-twenty-five that are measured for respirable silica. The dust we're talking about is substantially coarser than that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the principal place that you would get dust comes off of your roads, all of your roads. Everywhere you drive, um, your, when your car tires come in contact with the road's surface, they are degrading the road's surface, and they are casting a myriad of microscopic particles into the air. Anybody who lives next to a busy road will tell you that it's impossible to keep the place clean because that fraction of dust is universally everywhere around the road. Every car that goes by loosens a little more of it and casts it into the air. Uh, the active, the, that kind of particle matter coming out of, from wind or from a blast or something like that would not be as nearly as prevalent or frequent as that from traffic. Uh, and that traffic-sized fraction can travel with the wind very easily, and it is in fact the component of the atmosphere that produces, uh, the focus or, or the nucleus for the coalescence of water vapor into water droplets, and that's how we get rain. So it's, it's universal. Yes, there is crystalline silica in the atmosphere all the time, and it is a result of human and natural activity. The amount of crystalline silica that would be coming off of the ground from either a blast or from wind would be very, very low and a very infrequent and short duration.
So, um, because I was, I'm glad you brought up the wind, because again, it, it's, you said it dissipates quickly, and of course it falls to the ground quickly because it's much heavier than water vapor. Uh, but what about on a windy day? And, and I'm sure this time of year, of course, you know, for the last few months, the wind is almost always out of one of the northerly directions, right? So it would be coming onto there. So, so what would be the impact? You, you, we've had an unusually windy winter, in my opinion. Um, a blast goes off, it's blowing twenty-two miles an hour. How far does it go?
Uh, typically, the clouds do not go far if the ground is wet. If the ground is dry, they can travel. Um, but again, the blast is done in a manner that the material is heaved into the center of the pit, so that it has a several hundred-foot setback before that material gets to the property line.
Okay. Um, so this coarser material, you're saying that the particles are actually coarser, right? So they're much larger and stuff. So that would seem like it's even easier than to put up some sort of filtering barrier to, to, to prevent it from going on to people's property?
Uh, yeah, actually, the site in and of itself lends itself well to the restriction of air currents because it's in a topographically low area and is surrounded by forest. And therefore, it's, I don't really see too much in the way of, um, dust plumes off of...
On a windy day, how, how high up will, will it take the particles?
It won't take them very high at all. It'll only take them just as high as it can, can lift them off of the ground or off of the car tires or truck tires or whatever.
Is that ten feet? Is it a hundred feet? Is it?
Yeah, it's under a hundred feet. It's, it's low. I can't give you an exact number for that, but it's, it's going to be low, and it's going to be based on wind speed. And, but, you know, those materials, again, when you're, the amount of traffic that is in a pit is very low, and the speeds that they're traveling is very low, and they water the roads. Whereas roadways out and about are not watered, and they are not mitigated for dust in any way, shape, or form, and they've got a constant pulverizing effect and casting effect produced by traffic, which, like I say, is thousands of times greater than what is produced in a pit.
Okay, thank you for that. Dr. Benoit?
If I may?
Oh, yes.
Do they use blasting mats? And if they did use blasting mats, would it mitigate the rising of the dust?
Uh, blasting mats would mitigate a certain amount of rising of dust, but not completely because a blasting mat isn't really designed to mitigate dust. What a blasting mat is designed to do is to mitigate throw. Uh, it's a safety precaution. And blasting mats are actually designed to ventilate. The gases are ventilated through the, the tires or the steel-woven cables so that the material doesn't act like a balloon, but instead it acts more like a net. Uh, if there was no ability to ventilate gas, the thing would inflate with the gases from the explosion process, and it wouldn't do anything for the rock.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr. Landry, um, since you said there's going to be somebody else at some point, someone's going to study the whole dust issue?
Yes.
So I, I would just ask that you ask them to determine, you know, based on wind speed, about how high this dust goes, because if you're going to put up some sort of filtration, uh, barrier, you'll need to know how high to make it. You want a second, you want a second chance here? You can, you need to go up to the podium.
Yes.
Double dipping.
Rebecca DeCristofaro again. Do we know if Holston blasts?
Do we know that? Unaware.
If Holston does blast, I would be interested in understanding what their...
I mean, it was Holston sand and gravel, not Holston sand, gravel, and granite, so I don't know if they need to blast.
Right.
If, if, if they're still limited.
Well, their material's sand and stone.
Stone. That's where the blasting comes in, right. But, but it's, it's a fair question.
If Holston does blast, then I would be interested in understanding what their potential fugitive dust mitigation practices are. Um, and then maybe that's something that could also be suggested.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Carillo, is that, he's writing it down now. Thank you. Is anybody else from, yes, sir?
Joey Savigny, seventeen ninety Pound Hill Road. I've lived on Pound Hill Road for sixteen years. Um, never had an issue with trucks on the road, never had an issue with the quarry, never had an issue with dust. Um, I just want to clarify that not everybody has a problem with the quarry that lives in that area.
Mm-hmm.
There's only a few people. Um, my, my only thought to you guys would be, listen to the experts and not what everybody in town that thinks there was an expert is saying. That's all I got. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Somebody else wish to speak? Yeah, there you go.
Darlene Machado, fifty-two Douglas Pike. And, um, I have a couple of questions. Um, I, where is that other mic? The one that...
Oh, he's got...
Because I need to kind of go that way.
Okay. Keep in mind, this is not karaoke night.
What?
This is not karaoke night.
Oh, trust me, I can't sing or dance. Let me, okay. Um, this area, um, that, I'm gonna talk first about some, the animals that come like through here. They used to come through here to get to the river. They used to run the ridge here. And they developed this in Barvo, and they fenced it in. this in Barville, and they fenced it in. They fenced in this area, fenced in over here. And Mrs. Howler and I have a wildlife parade almost every day over here. We had a beer just recently, come and snatched my mother's suet, actually, yesterday morning. And if we fence this off, they're trying to come through, they come through this way, and they come through, you know, this way. But if we fence this off, they won't be able to get to the river. And seasonally, there's a watering hole on the south side of Pound Hill. So that, you know, like, there, there's going to be less vegetation, you know, as you come more southerly. But also, their root is going to get cut off. So I was just wondering, like, if this all gets fenced off. It's already fenced off at the auto lot, you know, like North Smithfield Auto. And then this got fenced off here. So they're trying to, you know, cross over here. And that's just a question I have about, we're supposed to be in a conservation district.
Okay.
And I wanted to ask about why it says, like, building envelope, and also about the possible road that, that's listed in, in the notes, like a possible road going to Oxford, which would alleviate traffic on Pine Hill.
Okay.
I was, I know that Holliston put stones, but I can't, I don't go down there, but I can't see them where they used to be. They used to be closer to Pound Hill. And you could see they clearly blocked it off. But I think ever since the King sold their property and developed it into the, what are these two?
Solar.
Solar, yeah. That those stones were set further back off the road, like, maybe further down, because I can't see them where they used to be. So they used to be, where's, see that, that little connecting line up there?
Mm-hmm.
And then it goes to Oxford Road, and then Pine. And you still be, like, within, like, you could see them, that Holliston put them there, locked them off, where now I can't see them at all. So I don't know if they removed them, or, because I'm not, I'm not sure on here if that's, is that the solar place up there?
Yes.
It is right there?
Yep.
So, you know, that, that's possible road there, as far as access, which is listed on there as possible easement.
Yep. So...
And that was, and I just want to say, just to make note that North Smithfield is actually residential to the town bound. And our town bound got taken, and I witnessed it when I was, like, 11 years old. And so what happened was industrial Barville actually encroached into residential North Smithfield.
It did, yeah.
So this would actually be a second industrial site that's in North Smithfield. They've actually encroached into residential North Smithfield from this site. And I want to know who I can talk to, to get our bound replaced. We just celebrated 154th anniversary, and I would like it put back.
Okay. I, I think it's fair to say that's not something we're going to cover this evening, but I'm sure, I'm sure, between Ms. Agliosi and the planning office, they can look into that. Thank you. I had, so if I could ask Ms. Landry to come up, maybe you could address the, the second item first about the building envelope and the possible road, the possible new road?
My client tells me that there are limitations here on, on another road. He owns this property here. It's very narrow. There's ledge over in this area and significant elevation. Changes, so that would be nice to have there, but it doesn't appear that a road out, and we don't own the land all the way to Oxford to begin with. So there are limitations on the feasibility of another road being placed there.
Okay.
We continue to look at it, but right now, I think that would be, we'd like to have that, but I don't think it's possible.
Okay. And the other thing, was just a clarification of what's meant by the building envelope?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure what, what she was...
It's in a, it's...
What she was talking, I think maybe she meant the extent of the buffer and the extent of the future excavation area.
Yeah, it might be mislabeled. It's the, it's the...
That green line is the 50...
To the top left.
Top left.
Of, of the property. See, it says...
Building envelope typical.
Right there. Right there. Yeah.
That's pointing to the dash line.
Yeah, it's, yeah, that doesn't make sense, does it?
I'm not sure. I think that's pointing to a fence there.
It is, yeah.
At, at the property line. I mean, that's the original, original beginning point of the original excavations up there.
If I may, Mr. Landry, that line that it's, that the building envelope typical is being pointed to, and your legend is calling out as a building setback line, so perhaps that, your map is just missed labeled, and building envelope, because there's clearly no building present.
Right.
That that should be, that should say building setback line.
Yeah, that probably should be setback.
That makes sense.
Okay. All right. So, the first question that was raised is about accommodating the wildlife traffic. And just as example, one of the things that we've done for many of the solar power plant projects, because they require all kinds of fencing and stuff, and depending on the size, allowing for an actual wildlife corridor. I mean, the fencing itself, you know, they, they have that special fencing that only, that only goes down to, like, eight inches above the ground or something to allow small animals, but to allow for deer, a bear, and all that.
Yeah.
You need to have an actual corridor. It doesn't have to be wide, but I mean, at least six feet or something like that.
Yeah.
Just so they can continue their natural daily routine. So, could you address that?
I, I don't see why we would have any issue with that if that's the, the normal practice for trying to accommodate industrial activity in a, in an area where wildlife is present. I am familiar with the, the little critter spaces on those fences, and I had assumed they'd be something we could do for the, do for the bears. The, the fence was, we thought something the residents might want. That wasn't really our, our proposal. We thought that fencing would, would create a, a less likelihood of intrusion. It's a clearer marker of where the boundary line is. But that, I think, anything's on the table.
Well, that might, that, you know, as you said early on, that you were hoping to work things out with the, the residents.
Oh, absolutely.
Directly, and so that would be to get, the question answered as to whether a fence is even needed, or if it's, if it's not needed everywhere, we really just need the acoustic fencing in certain areas?
Sure.
You know, that kind of thing.
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay. Anybody else? Going once?
Thanks.
Going twice? You have one more. You triple dip. Go ahead.
I just, I have one more question, since Darlene did bring up some of the roadway questions. It's my understanding that formerly this company did use Holliston's road to access the quarry. I don't know when they stopped using that road. It predated May. But as a result, they've, they now use Pine Hill Road. That's obviously through a residential area. I don't know if this is a component of, you know, this conversation, but I guess my question is, would they potentially be open to partnering with Holliston in the future to use that roadway instead of driving through a residential area?
Okay.
Some days we see 20 trucks. Some days we see no trucks. Some days we see 100 trucks.
Right.
So I think that would be a nice to have.
Okay, fair question. Ms. Landry, is that, that one you can address now?
Mr. Pezz has explained to me that maybe about 15 years ago, there was some accommodation by Mr. Wilson under which they were sharing the road for a short period of time, but that Mr. Wilson tired of that accommodation and didn't want to continue it. So that's not something that's, that's likely available to us going forward.
It's on their property, right?
It's on their property, yes.
Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I mean it this time. All right.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
We have a motion to close the public hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Pose? No. Public hearing is closed at 9:16. Thank you. Oh, Mr. Agliosi, where do we go from here?
Well, I, I think, Mr. Landry has indicated he still wants to present...
Right.
...these additional experts. And we can certainly make the council aware of that on Monday as well, so that...
So we're looking at it.
Kind of tracking.
A continuing...
If you're going to continue it a month, Mr. Landry can make the same request after he finishes tomorrow on Monday night? Is that your intention, Mr. Landry?
What they need here.
All right, so he's thinking, ask this continued to your next meeting, whatever that is, and he'll ask the council to make sure it goes one after that.
Sure.
The council, I'm sure, has got significant more time as well. They've been blocking off most of their meetings, like you have, for this hearing.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other, any other discussion from the board before we move to continue?
Can, can, is it possible to get any of the data that's been referenced in any of these reports provided to Planning Council, the administration, whoever, just because, well, you know, I hear it, and you know, you're presenting it as an expert. I would like to see it myself. And I think it adds value to kind of the board's decisions.
Sort of, sort of a preview of the transparency proposed.
Yeah, we can do that.
We'll, we'll, we'll put together a package of the most recent reports. I made mention of, of the blasting report from December. I handed out multiple copies of that at the town council. I did not think to make multiple copies tonight. I wish I had. But we can provide those to the planner for distribution to you.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
That'd be helpful. Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Agliosi?
Ask the board to continue it to a date certain, to your next meeting.
Next meeting would be April 10th.
April 10th, which means that, Mr. Landry, on Monday, the 13th of March, you'll have to continue with two council meetings from that date, not one. Unless you need to, you'll have to go one, you have to go four weeks. Are you agreeable with that, Mr. Landry?
The, the council meeting that would be after hours on the 10th would then be the April 21st.
Okay.
Just for everybody's edification.
Right.
I mean, for one day.
Right.
I mean, the, the only comment that I still stand, I made last meeting, and I've heard it was made at the last council meeting, is that I, I would encourage the council to start looking at getting some peer reviewing of these reports, having an independent reviewer of these. While, Mr. Carillo, you have an extensive list of, of expertise and qualifications. I think just for our, just to protect us on our end, as we do with the planning board, that the council really consider looking into getting an independent reviewer of all these reports. So then we can have a non-biased look at everything and really be able to scrutinize some, some things that have been brought up by residents, by the applicant. And then that way, everyone's kind of on the same playing field.
May I just, so I think that's going to be part of your recommendation to the council when you, if, whatever decision you make.
At that time, yeah.
It'll be that time, because you're only making a recommendation to the council.
Yeah.
Okay.
They're the ones to make the decision.
Yeah.
I don't think they're gonna, I don't think they're going to even consider that till they get your recommendation.
Gotcha.
But it makes good sense.
That makes sense. Yeah. As Mr. Porter pointed out, that is common practice for us to do with our development projects, is to have peer review. So I think it, it's a very good suggestion.
And we're doing, we're making two motions, though. We're consistency with the comp plan, and then the recommendations that the planning office has outlined, moving forward, if the council does, do decide to move forward with the overlay district.
But that's, but that's not...
But my understanding is, you're going to give the council a series of recommendations.
Yep.
One of the recommendations might be, as part of your analysis, we encourage you to get peer review.
Yeah.
Before you make a decision.
Yeah, sure.
That'll be on your list. They'll either say yea or nay, and if they decide they want it, they'll get it.
Are you saying, are you saying we can't make it a stipulation?
Right. That's exactly what I'm saying. You can make it a recommendation.
Okay. All right.
I do.
Can I ask, can I ask for clarity on that? Stop talking about it.
Absolutely.
And Mr. Porter brought it up. So I know in the groundwater aquifer zoning regulation that we have, with the planning regulation that we have, for expert testimony, there was a stipulation at the request of the planning board. So the planning board can request it essentially. I know it can't be a stipulation for the council's approval, but it does speak to just that with a litany of things that would have to be reviewed. So, that was one of the, the changes.
Okay, great.
It should be enforced.
Okay. Make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to continue to a date certain of April 10th.
We have a motion to continue. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second. We'll call a vote.
Yes.
Mr. Dr. Benoit, Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Menard?
Yes.
Mr. Ossian?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So we continue. Thank you all very much for that. I learned more about blasting tonight than I ever knew, than I ever thought I might need to know.
No, there is none.
There is not.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. That's a quick second. Those in favor?
Aye.
We, we are adjourned at 9:20.